Welcome back Equity Warriors. Thanks for tuning in. Just a quick note, remember if you have not subscribed to my YouTube channel @AlmitraBerry, do that right now. Push pause, click on the subscribe button, hit that notifications button and be the first to get every show, because you won't want to miss a single one this season. We're continuing on our focus of politics ed in education. My guest today is Deborah Keys Wright. She's the founder of The Right Keys to Consulting. She's an esteemed board governance and equity consultant with over 20 years of experience, specializing in leadership training, educational equity, and dismantling racial disparities within school boards nationwide. Deborah's unique impactful approach has led her to partnerships with organizations like AASA, the School Superintendent's Association, and the California School Boards Association. As a trained facilitator and Michigan's first ASAE Diversity Executive, can I say that? Diversity Executive Leadership Program Scholar, I got it. Deborah continues to transform governance teams and foster equity in education. Deb, welcome to the show.
Thank you so much. Glad to be here.
I know a little bit, matter of fact, I know a lot about your background because I have known you for so long, but I want you to share with our listeners, your background, your role in school board governance, and how you came to specialize in this area.
Right, yes, thank you. And again, thank you so much. It's an honor to be on this platform with you. You are definitely a warrior at in this field. So I hold on to your coat tail, if you will, to learn from you. And so I'm so pleased to be here with you doing this work, which is so important. You know, many times people ask us, well, when are you going to get to the place where you don't have to do this? Any more is when we don't have to do this anymore. And so we know that this is a journey for all of us. So I love this space that I'm in. I don't even call it work. Working with school boards for over 20 some years is such a pleasure for me and being my own boss in this space where I can go all over the country doing this work. It's phenomenal. You know, but this was not my first choice of career. I kind of fell into it. I really wanted to be in law enforcement. And so, you know, dabbled a little bit at the police department, not as an officer, and then the sheriff's department. And then I was actually recruited to go on the other side, you know, and be with an organization where it was mission driven. So I thought that that was my niche. There that I really wanted to be a part of something that there was a mission and it did encompass really helping out students, not being a teacher or anything like that, but really making policy. So that's the level where I am, of course, of encouraging board members to set the right policies in order to do the work so that in the classroom that the kids are getting everything that they need. And so again, it is just a pleasure to be able to do, wake up and do something that I love to do. And I happen to get paid to do it, and which is so awesome. But being, you know, being that warrior for school board members, I'm their biggest cheerleader. I always tell them that, really focusing on, you know, what they can do a better job in, because as we know, it's not really a lot of requirements to get this very important job. So I kind of fell into it, but I'm glad I did. I absolutely love it. And equity, of course, is woven through that. It's nothing new. It's just now being very intentional about calling it out.
Yeah. I know, you know, everybody knows or probably recognizes that their school district has a school board. But a lot of times folks don't understand what the school board does. Now lately, we've seen a lot of school boards in the news, not in a positive light, but you know, help us, especially the parents and people who are not involved in education who listen to this show. Can you explain to them what a school board does? What's their role in a school system here in the United States? And why is it important?
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, first of all, you know, we have to look at what are the requirements to even get this job, if you will. And it's very minimal. Like I mentioned before, mostly in many states, it's 18 years of age, being a citizen of your community, following the state laws and, you know, being able to be elected, because now you are, you become a politician. So very minimal required, no educational qualifications. You have a GED to a PhD and everyone in the middle. But you're being represented, of course, and selected by the community. Some board members are appointed, but the majority are elected. And so their job is to set policy. That is one of the major responsibilities. Always like to say, there are three. Setting policy, hiring the education expert, which is the superintendent, and being a good steward of that budget. Those are the top three responsibilities. And yes, there are bullet points under each of those, but those are your top three, because the policymaking drives the direction of the district is just kind of think of it as a, the guardrails, keeping very focused on what you're supposed to do, really the law, the land for the school district. So setting policy is the main responsibility. It doesn't sound like it's very exciting, because it's more exciting to get, you know, I always say below, I have this governance clock that shows the authority of the board at the top of the clock, and the authority of the administrator, the superintendent at the bottom. It's more exciting going below this dotted line. But it's super important to set policies because that is setting the direction. And so it will help understand, help community people understand that the board is only higher, usually just the superintendent, that's their only employee. In some states, they hire the treasurer or other people, but mainly the education expert. And so they're not responsible for hiring teachers, coaches, or any other staff members. But they do make sure that there's accountability, focused on every level, so that they're the superintendent, whoever they hire, making sure that everyone meets the criteria. And the board is pretty much looking at the what. I always say the big picture of what is needed to ensure that the district is run properly. The superintendent and their staff actually run the day to day operations. Board of Education, board members do not run the district. But again, that key piece is ensuring that it's run properly. So understanding all of the the interworkings of the district is very important. But at that higher level, not getting into the minutia of saying how to do the work, but just identifying that we have issues in this area, we have to focus on what's best for children, and making sure that there is, there are no barriers in the way for educating students. And so that, that's what boys are really responsible for. And the key thing is, they have to do it as a team. You know, there are boards that are five, seven, nine, 11, or 13 members of a team. And so you're, yes, you're elected individually, but then the work is, how do I work collaboratively with my team? Because not one board member has the authority to give the directive to the superintendent to do anything. It is a collective voice for the Board of Education. So I always like to remind them, once that gavel hits, and you disperse, you are no longer the Board of Education. You are a board member where there's really no power, if you will. All the power is collectively sitting at the table.
And yet, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to my, I'll call it my activist, my parent activist days, when my children were in grade school, and I was the president of the PTA at my school level. I was president of the PTA at the district level. A lot of people don't, you know, PTA as an organization has its own political structure. And so one of the things that I was constantly doing was speaking to the board at school board meetings. So it was like every single school board. So for me, that, or the way we worked, it was parents would come to us with challenges and grievances that they could not seem to get heard at their school, at their local school. And then if we could not get a board member to listen privately, you know, going to that board member that represented that area, that we would take our grievance, as it were, to a school board meeting. And, you know, we might say air that dirty laundry out in public, because we could not get action. So is it important for people to know who their school board member is? Well, I'm going to back up, because we talked about electing elections. And I know that in some of the elections I've looked at, school board members in big cities are winning, winning by there only being about 800 people that even voted in an area that's got tens of thousands of people that they represent. So I think one of the things that people need to recognize and understand is if you don't like what's going on in your school system, the first thing you have to do is vote for your school board representative, know who those people are and what they stand for, and then vote.
Absolutely.
And then as individuals, important to know who your board member is, how to get ahold of them, because they have to respond to their constituents. Am I correct?
Absolutely, they do. And, um, Peggy, and you said quite a bit there, and it is so true. I can just visually see talking to one board member, you know, one on one, not getting any satisfaction, perhaps a parent may feel, and then coming to the board meeting to air the dirty laundry. But actually, that is the place you should go. If you come into a one board member, board members cannot solve anyone's problem. That's not their job. What they can do is listen, because they are elected to represent the educational needs of the community. So absolutely getting to know who your board member representative is, is very important. But usually, nine times out of 10, when there is a concern, it's usually in the administrative realm. And so contacting, if there's an issue in the building, the school building, the first thing I would say, you know, a board member would even say, did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? And so you follow a protocol, and you don't just jump to the Board of Education. I always think if it gets to the Board of Education, we have a problem here, because there are 99% of things can be handled administratively. And so, yes, the board is going to get wind of it, because they are fabric of the community. And what they, what you do, you take that information and deliver it to the superintendent, because that's where that is their responsibility to make sure what's happening in the classroom and the buildings are, is being addressed. But when you have a concern and, and during a board member, a board meeting, of course, board members don't engage, or they should engage in conversation.
They shouldn't. Now, I've been at board meetings when they have, and it is horrible when they do.
Number one, it's the law. You invite, look at your open meetings law. You're in violation of that. I know you want to, because it's very hard. You know, listening to someone pour their heart out, telling you about their beautiful scholars and their brilliance, and they're not being, their situation is not being addressed. So you want to respond, but that's not the place to do that. You have, that is listening time. And then if, if it's necessary, a board president, of course, can ask the superintendent to make a comment, and it could be, you know, I, we hear you. We will follow up with you next week or whatever, and let the administrators handle it, because of course, we know when they're sharing the information, that's not the whole picture. And it's not expected for them to deliver the whole picture. They're telling you what impacted their child, which is acceptable. And so again, how you run the meeting is very important, because board members have to continue to educate the community on the parameters in which they are to operate. You know, that's why we, we don't engage with you. So it's not being rude, that we're just staring at you while you're upset or whatever, you're showing all the anxiety and the passion, but we can't respond to you. So I always remind board members, say that at the beginning of that portion of your agenda, that the public comment, what it is, that this is a time for us to hear from our community. And usually, it's not the very first time you've heard about whatever the issue is, but just making sure that that loop is closed eventually. And superintendents will take that information and work with their staff, and they will close that loop. And if necessary, you know, inform the board member of what the outcome is after they've contacted the parent. But it's a cycle. You have to just continue to do that. And the key thing of Almitra is making sure that there are good relationships.
Yeah.
And, and, and making sure that, you know, board members have good relationships with each other, good relationships with their education expert, and knowing that there is an expectation to address issues. And some things are done, and it's not done at that board table. When board members come together, it is a business meeting. So it means you are supposed to handle the business of the district. And so that's why it's important not to go back and forth. You have an agenda, you are, you are by law to follow what's on the agenda. There are topics, of course, that board members need to have really more in-depth conversations. And I always suggest to them, have study sessions, work sessions, so that you can take an hour or two to go really deep into whatever that topic is, so that you get a better understanding. Because at the end of the day, when it's on the agenda, it's probably ready for action to be taken. Some things are placed there for information, but the job is, when you have a business meeting, eventually, action needs to be taken. And so there's a lot of things that are going on that perhaps the community is not aware of. That's why board members have to educate the community as they are being educated and doing their governance work as well.
Yeah. Now, I want to be clear. I did go through protocol. When I got to the board, it was because we'd already gone through an AP, a principal, a superintendent, all of those things. Yeah, yeah. I just don't want anybody who's listening to say, all right, Dr. Berry says just go out there and hammer the board. No, that is not what I'm saying. Go through those channels, but understand the board makes the rules. The superintendent implements the rules that the board, that the board creates. But the, and they are your, they are your, like, last ditch effort, when you cannot get things resolved down at the school level. But vote, 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 like your life depended on it.
Yeah, because as we know, just nationally, you know, I'm hoping that people will start getting more interested in local control, because there's evidence to show that we need to pay attention to your, your school board, your, your, your police department, mayor, all of that. You have to pay attention to, because it impacts you on the local level.
Much more so than anything that's happening at the federal level, because that's slow. You know, I, I live in Houston, for those who don't know, and our school board, Houston Independent School District, not that I have any children there, but that's our local school board, and it has just been taken over by the state. And so that, while they may say that there is still local input, it is being managed by the governor, and that is a, a fully political decision that has been taken, that's impacting every single child without the input of the community. And that is, you know, I have in my time worked in more districts than I want to think about that have been taken over by the state and been there either before, during, or after that state takeover. And it's never good for kids. So we have to hold, I'm go to accountability. We have to hold our school boards accountable. One, we have to make good decisions, get out and vote, and know who those people are, but then hold them accountable. So how does a, how do we hold our school boards accountable for the decisions they make, especially when we're in this sort of hyper-political environment in education? And politics might, we know in many places, is influencing the actions of school boards. That's how we're getting book bans, and that's how we're getting these anti-gender identity policies put in place. How do we hold them accountable?
Yeah.
Yeah, baby sigh.
I know. Because it's a, it's a journey. And I always like to think of it, I want to start with the board, holding themselves accountable first, because it is going to impact on your constituents. If, from the, from the constituent's point of view, accountability, or to do something about, if you're not doing what we voted you to do, it's every four years, we vote you out. But there could be a lot of damage that's done within that time period. So we don't want to just wait for that. Being very vocal again about what your expectations are, and understanding again, what board members can do. And within policies, so bring forth policies as far as knowing, if, if number one, policies are available online. So for a community can see what policies are in place that impact their students. That's usually where it starts with my child or my neighbor's child or whatever, if there is something going on, to see what policies are in place to even address this. And if there are no policies in place, that definitely needs to be brought up. But it's really accountability at the board level, ensuring that they've done their homework, that they know what they're doing, what they're voting on, not only just relying on the, the administrators to give you all of the information. Board members, of course, should also do their own research, some of the training that they've received. And, and yes, you listen to your constituents, but you take all of those pieces and kind of put it on the table, if you will, and massage it collectively to say, now, based upon what we know, what can we do within the constraints that we may have, financial or whatever. But again, along the way, you're explaining this. That's why board meetings have to be in the public, so that the community can hear the discussions. And, and so, but board members have to make decisions based upon all of the information they have, and not just what's happening in another district or another state. And so practicing that for board members to make sure they have all the information, that they're making the right decision that's based upon facts, that's based upon data. I always say, data should make you do it. And, and you don't just use one data point. You use several data points, quantitative and qualitative data to, to help impact your decision making. But know that you have to just make the decision based upon all the information you have, and any constraints that you may have as far as, again, the budgetary. Not everyone in the community understands that, because they may look at the budget and you have a multi-million dollar budget, but you can't do XYZ. So there is a space where, again, the educating the community as far as, usually out of, of a budget, 80 to 85% is human capital. So we're dealing with high, you know, with, with staff, with insurance, all of the things that we have no control over. So you have 10, 20, 15% to educate children. And so, you know, until schools are totally funded, whenever that comes, we have to deal with what we have. So dealing in reality, you know, the spaces of reality, and letting the community know exactly where you are, so that there are no surprises. We have to share good, bad, and the ugly as far as where we are financially, where our test scores are. And so I think if board members practice that, being transparent, there with the level of understanding, and I think it would hold them accountable for what they know. Because if you're keeping information away from the community, there's a lot of assumptions that that happen. And, and it's hard to hold anyone accountable if you truly don't understand what their job is. And again, board members need to hold everyone in the district accountable on every level. And, and that's again, by making sure there are evaluations. They don't hire anyone but the superintendent, but you have to ensure that, of course, superintendent is going to be held accountable for anyone who they hire. And we have to make sure, board members have to make sure that there is evaluations. We don't wait a whole two or three years to figure out if someone's doing their job. So there are so many levels of accountability, being responsible for contracts. You know, who you're getting, you're, you're hiring people to provide services to, to the students. So there's so many different areas, and that's what the board is responsible for, looking at the big picture and making sure that every level, there's that sense of making, looking through that lens of accountability. I always say the lens of governing, the lens of equity, all of those things to ensure that we are, that the district is running properly. So so many different moving parts in this whole accountability.
Yeah. Let's stay on that equity thread, you know, that's my favorite, my favorite topic. I know, we're, we're both on, we're, we are in complete alignment there. And equity has become sort of a loaded term. You know, I say, I was doing equity when we didn't have a word for it. But now, between equity and the other terrible word or, or term, critical race theory, or CRT, again, that goes to sort of hyper-politicizing education. And I know that that has, I know from personal experience that that has impact on school boards, because I've been the one presenting on behalf of a school board for a DEI action, where it was everything, I swear, but knives and pitchforks in the audience, ready to come at me. But we both know that DEI is such an important topic. So I want you to, you know, from your perspective, would, you know, why is it, A, we know it's critical for, you know, our, our public schools today, because equity is what provides for a proper and fair equitable education for every single child, no matter who they are, where they come from, their background, their language, their identity, all of those things. So that's critical. But what is it that, let's start with what is it that, that school boards can do? And what are some of the challenges maybe that school boards face when they're trying to either bring DEI into a school system, a district here in the States, and more broadly, just having their community accept that equity is something that is positive for all children?
Absolutely. And again, because every, I always speak through the lens of governing, so I always go up to the board. And that's where it's going to start too. Boards will, will create a culture in, in, in the district, so really embracing that diversity, equity, and inclusion is important. And what it is, the board being able to identify, if we say equity work, what does that mean? So having that common language, we, you know, if, if there's a board of five, and you ask five people, what does equity mean? You're going to get five different definitions. That's not necessarily wrong. However, it won't work for a district. You need to have one understanding of what the language of what equity means from this district. So it's a whole process that I, again, if it doesn't start at the top with the Board of Education of understanding what it is, and how do we know that we're not equitable? But if you don't have that understanding of what, you know of what it is, how, how can you address it if you don't know what it is?
Sometimes I say, on that definition, you know, I, I, I tell people, it's kind of like, or we may think of it, and now I can't remember who the justice was who wrote this in a Supreme Court decision. I can't give you a definition for pornography, but I know it when I see it. That equity, we know, but we know what equity is because we have numbers. We have data that shows that black and brown children are suspended much more frequently than white children are for the same offenses. They're sent to the office more frequently where white children are not. We see black and brown children referred to special education. So while those are things that are happening at the school level, it's our board that has to understand what the inequity looks like, so that they can create policy, so that we can eliminate those inequities. And so I always give them a simple definition. And that is, equity is without bias against or favoritism for. And so when we look at those numbers, when they look at that data, we want to make sure that there's no bias against any group, and there's no favoritism for any group. And then their job, you're, that's, that's your side of the equity coin, my side's down at the school, is to create those policies that will create that culture. And if they don't have that common understanding and a common culture at the board and a commitment to that work, it ain't going to happen in the schools.
Exactly. And, and understanding, again, what it is, and remove, and in addition to everything that you said, is removing any barriers. Whatever the barriers are, just remove them. But the only way the board, because they're not in the, of that, below that dotted line, they're not in the building, they don't see it. So equity, teachers and principals, equity is nothing new. You know, it's, but now we're being very intentional about calling it out, which is what the board has to be able to do. But the only way they can do that is asking the right questions. And this is where, again, board training comes into play, because what questions are you asking to get the, so when you are presented data, what does that mean? And every time I, when I work with boards, I say, okay, administrators can give you so much data to either quiet you or to make you anxious. So whichever, depending on the, what, what the, what the use of the data is going to be. But that's not the fault of administrators. There's a lot of data, but the board has to be able to understand that we're asking, now, we say, look at it in three ways. Where were we? Where are we now? And where are we trying to get to? So if you look at that, just because having data trends, so if someone just gives you data and you have all this beautiful, oh, we're, we're excelling, my first question would be, compared to what? How great are we compared to what? So when they start by asking the what questions, then you're getting more information, and then they're able to make policies to ensure that do we have, and even having an equity policy, which is really an umbrella for all the policies, looking at policies through that lens. So when we're looking at personnel through the lens of equity, yes, remembering that boys don't hire anyone but the superintendent, but what they can do regarding personnel is to say, well, are all of our, um, resume or, or all of our job descriptions up to date? If we're trying to have top-notch education, are we able to attract the right people, the right individuals? Are we, if we're trying?
And are we looking for a diversity of sources to recruit them from?
And if you are, if you want to diversify, just say, if you want to diversify the teaching staff from the board level, they would say, what processes do we have in place to ensure that we are spreading, you know, the net a little bit wider to be able to attract, just to increase diversity in the pool? We don't, we can't say if people are going to apply, but if we are only hosting the job in the same place, for the same type of people who have been applying. So again, the board, that's how they can deal with policy, with personnel without, you know, getting in the, in the weeds, but ensuring that, what's the process you have in place to ensure that you can diversify that? And again, going with contractors, are we looking at a diverse group of contractors? Are they, whether it's for curriculum, food service, or whatever, are we just continuing just to hire the same people we've always hired? Are we looking for black owned or minority owned business, diversify the, the business? So again, that lens of equity is in everything you do. And I usually try to remind board members, there are really four buckets, I call them. If the board's paying attention to these four areas through the lens of equity, they are hitting every part of of the school system. And the first one, of course, is budget. And so the budget is going to touch everything you do. The other one is HR. Again, that example I used about diversifying the teaching staff, or what, making sure that practices are in place. Teaching and learning, curriculum that's relevant to the demographics of the students in in the district. Do children see themselves in the books that you are agreeing to purchase these multimillion dollar of contracts that businesses get? And and then school safety and climate, because if kids don't feel safe in school, they're not going to learn. And again, the discipline, disproportionality and disciplining children of black and brown children compared to not. We have to look at that data. And also, I think, because equity, people are so afraid of it now, because we're being intentional about it. I always say, we have to just remember to meet people where they are and not ever make staff feel that it's a blame and shame type of a system that we're journey that we're going to go on. What we are going to do is call it out. And so, but you have to allow people to know that we have to stop behaving in certain ways. We have to remove some policies that perpetuate inequities, and we have to talk about this. But when you get that space to talk to people and they tell, you know, we always say, I'll meet you where you are. Well, when they tell you where they are, you better be ready.
You gotta go down and meet them. You gotta go down and meet them.
It's not the shame or blame, but at the end of the day, we need to get here for our students. So we're going to take, bring you along. Well, what we are going to do is stop practicing things, behaviors that perpetuate inequitable practice. We have to stop doing that because our students are brilliant scholars are are the victims. And I always say, really, the true constituents are those children. They are just not old enough to vote yet.
Yet.
Yes.
Yet.
And and so that's what we have to make sure. And that, again, is coming from the Board of Education, understanding the role of, that's how important policymaking is. Once you put that in place, then, you know, the superintendent is taking it and make, turning it into administrative regulations. And saying, I'm interpreting what the Board of Education is telling me to do. And this is what it looks like, implementing it, and then it's going to be evaluated, then it goes back up to the board. That's that circular clock of evaluating, making sure that we're doing things correctly. And if not, we need to make some adjustments because we have to educate children. That's the business we're in. So understand, I just don't understand sometimes why individuals are in this business if they really don't care about children. And they may say.
As a stepping stone to something else, perhaps.
Absolutely. And just say, well, all kids can't learn. Yes, they can.
That's not true.
Differently. Success looks different for every child. And when you're in this space of looking at equity, that's where you have that culture identity. All of that is important for a child to be, they come to school as their their whole self. And then we want to put labels, you're free and reduced, you're at risk, you're this. These are brilliant gems that are coming to school every day. Um, but as adults being, have been in that power stru- of structure, we oppress children every day. Whether it's intentional or not, we just have to step back and say, okay, what role did I play in this stuff? And it's not personal. It is not, we have to take that personal piece out of it and really believe that we're going to come together for the best of children every time we step on the campus there. Every time we're in the classroom and boards of education making the decisions with children in mind at all times. Is we value the adults? Absolutely. We are in the business of educating children. And when you keep that as the focal point, as the center of everything you do, it will help you not focus on what I wa- or what my value is. Well, sometimes what your values, your core values and beliefs are contradict what the state, what the law says you must do. And so what are you gonna do about that, board members? You know, that's that balancing act. Uh, but we we have to, just like doctors take an oath to not harm people. We have to take an oath, you know, not to harm children in the educational space as well. And and it's a journey.
I have a reformulated Hippocratic oath for teachers that I wrote in my book, and it still starts with first, do no harm. That we should not do anything that harms a child now or harms their future. And so a lot of the actions that we take, because, and I say we, it's that sort of that global royal, that educators, not all, but some, take that impact, children's futures are seen or may be seen as, you know, it's a little thing. Yes, I sent him to the office. No, he didn't do his homework. I didn't hold him accountable. You know, they've got probably, all of these excuses and all of these other isms that take place are harming children later on. And so I'm gonna go back up to policy. Because what I'd like you to do is sort of, and I'll say, break it down so that the average parent who maybe only has a GED will understand how, what is the process of how how a policy is developed and then implemented with the school board?
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, first of all, you have to know that there's a need for it. So usually something is going on, you know, where you determine there is a need to have a policy. And some, even before that, there are already policies in place that the the state requires, federal government to your state, usually state associations or policy businesses that ensure that boards of that districts are in compliance. So they're gonna make sure you're following the law, but that's as far as they are to go. Now, when it goes deep into what's actually happening in the district, that usually comes through the administrative area. Because teachers and principals, superintendent, they're the boots on the ground. They know what's happening. So really, you know, finding out where there's a need, and that's presented to the superintendent. And their staff usually brings forth a situation where we have to make sure that there is a policy in place to to cover this. And that's conversations going back with the Board of Education. This is done in an open meeting so that the community can hear, you know, when they're drafting a policy and the conversations go back and forth about the policies. They have a first and second reading this policy, and then it is adopted and then it's implemented. And so.
Okay, so hang on, back up for me.
Sure.
Now, about first and second reading, is that something that's happening in public at a meeting so that the public will hear? Okay. And is, at at what point, or is there a point in there where parents can speak to what's being presented?
And every time there's a board meeting, there is public comment. And so some boys set it up where, some boys actually have two times to public. One is, it it could only be something on the agenda. And then maybe at the end, they can say, well, you can speak about anything. So whatever that district is, how they run their their meetings. But if it's something on the agenda, because that is agendized, they can make, they can make their comments. But again, they're just making comments, board members aren't having a conversation, but board members are listening. And so they're taking into account what they they're hearing there, what they have read, other information. So they take that all into account when they are helping to draft the policy itself. And and so absolutely, public comment is important. And and this is why there should be more involvement. You know, it's, I know it's not the most exciting thing to do to come sit at a board meeting, especially if they go for hours. And people don't have the time. But of course, when we were, you know, remote for almost two years, that was an increase in people paying, listening online. Some districts have decided to do both of them, in person and continue to stream it on online or post it afterwards. So you can still go back and listen to it. And then you can make your comments, you know, send in, you send emails to the district or or whatever, to all the board members. Again, just to let them know what you're thinking. So it it's it's very structured, the way to do it, but the conversation is really important because you've identified that there's a situation, and we don't ever want to wait till there is a problem. And then we find out that there's not a policy to cover us, because it's just like the the laws of the land. You know, we have to have laws in place, whether you interact with those laws or not. You know, you like, there's a stop sign at at your corner, you don't like that stop sign, and it bothers you that you have to stop. But it's going to come to life when you don't stop, you know?
Yeah.
And so it's best to have those in place, again, as the the bumper, the guardrails for the district. So it's a process. Usually superintendents are bringing forth policies. Boards are the only one who can approve policies, and yes, boards can create, but they are the only one to approve policies. And they trust those, the administrators, again, because they are the boots on the ground dealing with that. And then, of course, the attorneys, you know, your legal counsel will look at it. But it's not that, you know, board members are actually sitting there writing policies out. You know, but so input into it is so important.
So let me ask you this. Let's say, let's say I'm a parent. And I um, want my child, or maybe, well, let's just say it's it's my child. And I feel that, oh, I don't know, that that my child is not being represented in the the books that are in the classroom. And the district, we know, is spending millions of dollars every year for classroom libraries. Would I, as a parent, then go to, who would I go to as a parent to say, I would like for their, how do I lobby, right? How do I, how do we get a policy that says that the the literature that's purchased for our classroom libraries needs to be reflective of the students that are in our school? How would I start that if I'm a parent? Where would I go?
Yeah, absolutely. And and just knowing that sometimes that there are committee structures with with boards where they can talk about, and it could be a curriculum committee or whatever, where they can talk about items just like this, where they can end up getting some information. I believe in most states when they have their committee meetings, that it is open to the public. If they have a committee of a whole, because that means the whole board is there, then definitely has to be open. But a- again, at the board meeting, it could be a collective of individuals, groups, like you said, like if it's a PTA or whatever advocacy group. They've come together and they share what evidence that they have. Sometimes students are presenting to say what it means to them. But all of, again, when it's presented to the Board of Education during that open session, it is information that everyone is hearing. The administrators are definitely listening, and the board is listening to you. It's just that not the interactive conversation, but that is a place to lobby for it. And when board members, again, are looking at contracts, all of this information as far as contracts, that should be, that's public con- public information. So board, it, community should be able to see when contracts are coming up, question those things. Board members should be questioning, they should be going through a process on, are we, again, just rubber stamping? Make it, getting the same contractors again each year, but specifically for curriculum, it is best for the uh, community members to to advocate at the the board meetings and to also meet with the with the superintendent or principal one-on-one. You know, it is okay for the community to go into the class, go into the school building, make your appointments to meet with the administrators to kind of talk through. And again, remembering that administrators can pull forth policy too. So if they're hearing this information from the community, so you hit every area, you do one-on-one with the administrators. Yes, you you advocate at board meetings so that all of this information is put together. And then there will be, there could be ad hoc committees to just say, we're going to try to dig deeper into this to see what we can do. The ad hoc committee could be, they could actually make it, community members are part of committee structures. The boards can do that. If you really want the community input, you have to invite them in. So the structures can be whatever the districts or boards are comfortable with. Especially when you're getting into the equity work, you want to have those task force, which are driven, you know, the community. Um, stakeholders are involved in that, administrators, is getting the voices, all of the voices in the room before a decision is made. So that's why it's it's critical for the community to voice their opinion on decisions that are going to impact their children or any student in the community. So using all of those different avenues to do it and consistently, not just come and do it one time and you walk away. No, it needs to be very intentional and consistently done so that they hear you. And yes, you could talk to your representative one-on-one, then that's the information they bring back to the team. And everyone's sharing, this is not just a fair, this is really happening. So we do it, again, going back to accountability, looking at the curriculum, does it represent our student population? That that is what, that's the space we're in today. And we have to really make sure that that is happening because if kids don't see themselves represented, whether the teacher or in the curriculum, in the books or whatever, how does that impact student self-esteem? Their uh, their willingness to or want to be in school, all of that is important.
It impacts everything.
Absolutely, absolutely. And and we know teachers are asked to be everything to children. Yes, we, sometimes we have to be the parent.
The nurse, the tutor, the, yeah.
All of that, but just let us all just care about children, who that baby is walking in the building. Care about them. So, you know, again, when you're looking at equity, and if, just say, the bus drive, everyone should be held accountable. So what is that experience when the bus driver is the first person to see a child, when they open up that door? How are they interacting with a with a child? Because that's going to determine how that child's day is going to be. How is the the person who is serving the child food? How are they interacting? Are they slapping it down like you in prison, you know, the slop? And it, but sometimes we, you know, this is not to say disparaging things about those people in in that in that position. But we have to be conscious of our behavior as adults. On what, how is that impacting these babies who don't know how to articulate how you just made me feel? Like I'm getting on the bouncing, you yelling at me, you don't know what I had to go through to get to the bus stop, you know?
And this is not your, not your area, but but the, I just did a show recently with men, group that does student mental health. And the level of 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 student mental health crises is just off the chain. We've got kids, one that at eleven years old committed suicide at school because of bullying. I mean, we just, we're not, if we are not more cognizant of what our children are coming to school with. And at the same time, there's this explosion of of teacher mental health crises and a and a much higher rate of suicide among teachers. We're all going through some stuff, right? Some some stuff. Um, and so, you know, to me, that says it's that much more important that our board members are conscientious and conscious and aware of what's happening down there so that those policies that do get created are created for the right reason. Again, going back to not doing harm first to the children who are your ultimate constituents. And keeping in mind that every single political decision that's made at the school board level ultimately impacts kids in the classroom, one way or another.
One way or another.
And that means it impacts our community as a whole, because these are the people who are going to grow up and lead and work in our communities and and vote. And vote.
And that's why it's important to have all the information. Because as a board member, I had a board member say to me, well, I'm not a politician. I'm like, oh, yes, you are.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Fortunately, uh, yes, you are, you you're an elected official. And so what you have to do is just be aware that, number one, that you are not just a one topic focused board member because you had certain people backing you to get elected. But then there's a sense of thinking that you owe them, that, you know, you owe them something. And once you get to that table, and even if you're divided into zones or or wards or district area, you are still an elected official for the entire district, for all of the students, not just your core area. You're represented in that area, but when you make decisions, you have to think about decisions that are going to impact all of the students. So board members have to be reminded that it's not just about, you know, area one. It's about all of the areas and having that conversation with your colleagues to get an understanding of what's what the big picture is. And and that's why it's important for board members to stay at that ten thousand foot view, if you will, to be able to look at the entire district and how it's functioning and make those decisions according to that area, not just specifically to one area. But also, again, reminding your constituents as you're engaging in the conversation, you're listening to them. Also reminding them, this is one piece of the big puzzle that we have to make the the decisions on. And as a board member, board members have a lot more information than the one person coming to them, saying what is impacting them. Not saying it's not important because it's it's the, it's their reality, it's their truth. But it is a piece of the big puzzle that board members have to step back and say, what decision can we make for the good of the district and for not just today? But how is it going to impact, if I'm making a decision for a kindergarten right now, how is it going to impact them when they get into middle school and and into high school? So you have to think of, um, before we're thinking, and how does it impact the future as much as we can? And and that's why we have three to five year strategic plans, you know, where the board is monitoring. where the board is monitoring that, that activity for the administrators. You, you're trying to project what's going to happen uh, in, in the future and you make your adjustments accordingly. But now you put all of that work, looking at it through the lens of equity, kind of complicates things because again, does everyone believe that we shouldn't even be doing this work? We know that in certain states you can't talk about.
You can't even talk about it.
There are some states that I, the work I do, I can't even come into those states doing that. And, and, and so the key thing is understanding why equity is good for all children.
Yeah.
Where, you know, you think about, I know you're familiar with this too, and in Berkeley, California, um, there, there's this article we have our board members read, it's called the curb cut effect. And it's when they actually literally cut the curb in a sidewalk to help those who are disabled in wheelchairs. That was for a specific group. But don't we, I walked out though.
All of us do it, all of us do it.
So it's okay, that was an equitable decision. We had to fo- hone in on a specific group. But this is a prime example on how it impacts everyone. So everyone can benefit from it. So I think if we think about equity in, in education, if we look at that lens and say, how, it is okay. It's, you know, you have to be unapologetic about focusing on groups who we have not served well. And again, we're not shaming or blaming people, but we have to admit that we have not done what we, we, we weren't as good as we thought we were. And I think going through the pandemic exposed everyone. The veil, the veil was dropped, the, the Band-Aid was pulled off, but it just positioned us to say, okay, this is the reality. This is where we are. Now, how do we get everyone on board to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do? And the Board of Education, holding people accountable to do what's right for children? Looking through that lens, all of our policies, everything we do, are we looking through that lens to make sure we are removing barriers from our students? But we know that it's very hard to deal with, I call it the mental model. You know, getting people to value this work and to feel that they, that they need to do anything different. It takes time, but it's never going to be an excuse. It's not an opt-in or out of educating children to the highest degree. That's, it's not a, you don't get that opportunity.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be. So you work on them at the board level, I'll work on them down at the school level. And district, you know, the, the, you work on the policy side, I'll work on the implementation side. If we can get them all to do the right thing, our kids will be fine. You know, I always sign off with the paraphrase of, I call it, the great Dr. Angela Davis, who said, "I am no longer accepting the things I cannot change, I am changing the things I cannot accept." So I want to ask you, what is one thing that you cannot accept? And then what can listeners do to support that change?
Yeah, that, that, and I loved your quote as well. What I, I find that's very present in everything I do is I just can't accept adults failing children. And, and I, I, it's just not acceptable. And, and all the spaces that I'm in all around the country, when people are comfortable with doing that, it really bothers me. So my thing is, we need to be disruptors. We need to make you uncomfortable because of course, when you're in that uncomfortable space, that's where change happens. And so when we stop just rubbing people like, oh, it's going to be okay. No, it's not okay. It's not okay. So now what are we all going to do to contribute? So that's what I, I, again, I can't accept just being okay with failing children. So parents, definitely be advocates for your babies, absolutely. Every single day, hold teachers accountable. You are sending your precious, precious gems to them every day. Expect them to teach them, there is not an option. Teach my baby, you meet them where they are, that is your job. When you no longer want to teach them, I think that perhaps this is not the field of work for you. But parents, please hold your teachers accountable. Teachers, hold yourself accountable, that every one of those beautiful babies can learn, they just learn differently. And you just find out, your job is to find out, how do I give this child what they need? This one may not need as much, but I still have to challenge them. That's the, that's the work you volunteered to do. No one's forcing you. And of course, at the, the board level, making sure that all of your policies and practices, your behavior aligns with what you want the district to be. And, and, and so when we see it from the top and it filters all the way to the bottom, the children are reaping the benefits of this work. But we have to be intentional about it. We have to practice it every single day because it doesn't just come naturally, it, it, it doesn't. And, but this is the business that we're in.
And it's a practice, not a perfection. So just keep practicing, get out there and advocate, keep pushing, keep listening, keep listening. Thanks. Just a reminder, folks, the ver- every single podcast is going to be published first on the YouTube channel. So again, if you're not subscribed to my YouTube channel, check down in the show notes for that link. Subscribe, turn on notifications so that you'll know when the next show is posted. Of course, share, share like you were taught in kindergarten, spread the word. My guest today has been Deborah Keys Wright, founder of The Right Keys to Consulting, a school board governance and equity consultancy. I'm going to put Deb's contact information, her social contacts, a full bio down in the show notes as well. If you're a board member listening and you don't have someone like Deborah working with you, get in touch with her. She's amazing, as you probably know by now. Deb, thanks for joining me and to the rest of you equity warriors out there, if you or someone you know is an everyday equity warrior doing amazing things, let me know. Chat, social, email, whatever, find me. This season, we're going to continue to highlight the politics of education and maybe you or someone you know, maybe you're a school board member, union leader, I don't know, who are you? What's your connection to the politics in education? Let me know, you should probably come on the show. Remember to like, share, subscribe, and as always, don't worry about the things you cannot change, change the things you can no longer accept. And I'll see you next time.